In a looking forward to.
It could come into effect in nineteen. They're only talking about possibly pushing that out for two more years. And they, they're afraid to do that because then the drop can be so significant that.
But is nineteen protected? We'll go into.
No, no, nineteen's not protected.
Okay.
Eighteen, right where we're in right now.
So we could change every year, okay, unless they extend two years, okay.
Apparently the legislature will make that decision this year. Talk to you all.
I do the public hearing because.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I. Public. I don't know if this is a public hearing or what, but with the Montezuma County Board of Health, is it an actual hearing?
Yes, so I think Kim has to read the notice.
All right.
Commissioner Lambert?
Here.
Commissioner Etelle?
Present.
Commissioner Soukla?
Here.
Administrator Brunner?
Here.
Attorney Baxter?
Here.
And Kim Purcell, Montezuma County Clerk and Recorder. Notice is hereby given pursuant to CRS 25-10-104 that the Montezuma County Board of Commissioners sitting in its capacity as the Montezuma County Board of Health will hold a public hearing on April 2nd, 2018 at 10:00 a.m. in the Commissioners' Room at 109 West Main Street, Cortez, Colorado to consider the following: Adoption of On-Site Wastewater Treatment System Regulations for the Montezuma County Public Health Department. The proposed onsite wastewater treatment system regulations may be reviewed in person at the Montezuma County Public Health Department at 106 West North Street, Cortez, Colorado. They can also be viewed online at www.monzumacounty.org, web department's public health, environmental slash health. Telephone inquiries regarding the subject matter of the public notice may be made by calling Melissa Matthews at 970-564-CORCE133. Written comments may be sent to Melissa Matthews at 106 West North Street, Cortez, Colorado, 81321, or by emailing to mmathews@co.monzumaceo.us. Copies of said proposed regulations are available for review at the Montezuma County Public Health Department, 106 West North Street, Cortez, Colorado, and may be inspected during regular office hours. Dated this 5th day of March 2018, Kim Purcell, per Board of the County Commissioners, Montezuma County, Colorado, published in the Cortez Journal on March 5th and March 12th, 2018.
Thank you, Kim. You ready to come on up?
Do I need those other documents?
Um, only if there's been questions or comments. See.
Good morning, Melissa.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning.
I've only asked John.
Don't say the other guy.
Okay, so since I don't do this very often, we like to say that we're gonna wing it. Um, because again, I put this out for public notice. I had no one come in and do any written comments. I did not receive any emails and I did not receive any phone inquiries. Um, but it is a public hearing, so if anyone in the audience would like to ask any questions or have any comments in regards to the regulations, this is the best time for that to take place.
Would you like to review real quick what the terms are?
Oh, good lord, really? No. Um, so as a county, we are adopting Regulation 43, which was adopted by the state almost a year ago. In that, we have almost an appendix or our local regulations that we can adopt. And so I brought to you the Title of Transfer Inspection Program, and I also brought the Oversight Program if we want to allow reductions in field size for advanced treatment systems. So those are the biggest changes that we had made. Uh, we, we haven't changed anything in regards to gallon size, for sizing. We did have, um, I don't know if you remember the highlighted section that was, um, the state wanted me to include that for incorporation of Regulation 43. And I did actually send that to Melissa. Um, it was what the state, um, let me see what their title was.
Preapproval by the state.
Right, it was, um, ooh, gosh, that's terrible. Oh, no, no, not that, sorry. It, um, is the Notice of Public Rulemaking Hearing before the Colorado Water Quality Control Commission. Um, what their actual changes were, but since we put incorporation, nothing was more stringent from that hearing. Yes, this is it. So therefore, we do not have to change anything in our wording. Basically, we're incorporating Regulation 43. What they did is they went through, and they actually, in this document, showed, um, they added acronyms, they changed a few terminologies, but they did not become more stringent than what the state had already outlined.
If we did nothing, then forty-three would apply to us?
Absolutely, yes, and so, so when I submit this back to the state, I have five days to submit this after the hearing today. Um, of course, I'll take out all the highlighted information and the reds and everything, but, um, so I can actually read that to you. Um, under our Section 1.4a, it says, "Included by reference: The requirements of the Colorado Water Quality Control Commission's On-Site Wastewater Treatment System Regulation, Regulation 43, 5CCR 1002-43, effective date June 30th of 2017, are made a part of these Montezuma County On-Site Wastewater Treatment System Regulations and will apply except where identified as an option of the local public health agency or where these regulations are more stringent than Regulation 43, 5CCR 1002-43, and included in these Montezuma County On-Site Wastewater Treatment System Regulations. All aspects of an onsite wastewater treatment system, including but not limited to permits, designs, performance, location, construction, alteration, inspection, maintenance, and use, must be as provided in Regulation 43 and any additional requirements contained in these regulations." So again, we are basically incorporating Regulation 43, as is.
I remember there was a, there was talk about a way that somebody, that you could make a decision instead of it going back to an engineer? I'm trying to recall.
Okay, so.
There was a section there.
Um, when we were talking about permits, an onsite wastewater treatment permit and engineered plans expire one year after the date of issuance if construction has not commenced. After expiration, a new application and new plans may be required unless approved by the designing engineer or MCPHD. The plans must be in compliance with the current onsite wastewater treatment regulations. Is that what you were thinking?
That's what I'm talking about, so, um, that would be you then, MCPHD?
Yeah.
So, and or, or would mean that either one of you?
Correct.
And would that be your call then, or?
Right, so, um, I talk to the engineers all the time, so it would, it would be a matter of coming into agreement, working out an agreement. Um, so I think.
You would have to file a saying?
Well, yeah. Yes, yes, absolutely. Sorry, it's Monday, I have to get Jokster.
That's a good answer for me.
Okay, good, good. Um, can you think of any other questions that you might have? Um, again, the Title of Transfer is something new to Montezuma County, and the Oversight Program is something new to Montezuma County. We do have systems in the county that are a higher level treatment, but we've never done an Oversight Program on those systems. So they are out there, but we really don't know if they're being maintained properly. Um, so this is on any new systems that are being designed in the county. We would have that operation Oversight Program. And then also, on the Title of Transfer, if, if that property is being transferred or sold and they have that type of a system, there's gonna be an inspection required to ensure that it is operating adequately. So.
This is just on the systems that are designed from this point forward, or?
So again, any new systems are automatically going to be in that Oversight Program. Uh, so there's gonna be an inspection sheet that goes along with that permit, basically. And they're going to be required to do monitoring, they're gonna be required to have it inspected. Um, basically, they have to contract with someone who's going to be, um, doing oversight on that program, doing maintenance. Um, because again, they, um, I have one engineer that calls them bells and whistles. They, they do are, um, I mean, they do have more, um, what am I gonna say?
More technology.
Well, more, they need babied a little bit more. Um, because we want to ensure that they are operating properly because they're designed to operate at a certain capacity. So, um, but if that property is being sold and they have that type of a system that is, let's say, twenty years old, then they're going to be required to make sure that that system is operating properly. And if not, then they'll have to make changes until it becomes adequate.
So how will they be notified of that? I mean, so, I put one in.
Mm-hmm.
Hold my house forever. I die. My kids are trying to sell my property. How will they know that?
So we have a lot of educating to do out of our department. Um, when we first were proposing this type of program, we tried to get anybody that's involved in these systems to give their input. So we really targeted the banks, we really targeted the realtors. Uh, we did talk to LePue because obviously they're being, um, brought out on the jobs mostly to locate tanks because a lot of people don't even know where their tanks are. But we tried to incorporate as many people as we could right off the get-go. But, but that now means that, okay, we're adopting this program. We have to come up with our own inspection forms. Um, the inspectors have to be NAWT certified. So there's a class being offered this month in Durango. And so Kate and I have been putting the word out to our contractors, our installers, um, also realtors, to see if they would want to have somebody that was certified. Um, so far, I know of three that are actually enrolled in the program or in, in the class. And, um, I had to call a few more people to say, hey, I thought you were interested in this. Get yourself on, on board because, again, we're so fortunate, it, it's in Durango. They're not gonna have to travel over the mountain to be able to be certified. However, there will be another class offered in November, but it's in, um, gosh, it's in Denver somewhere, I'm not sure. So I, I just feel like it's very important for us to kinda get our own people on board with this. I would like to have more people, but again, it does cost money for somebody to do the certification, so. Anyway, so we still have to develop our own inspection forms, how we're going to keep track of the systems that are being transferred. Um, so it's not gonna be an easy feat. Um, it's gonna be a lot of phone calls to the other counties that are already doing this program.
How many other counties are doing this program?
Um, currently, there are ten. Um, but there are only, let's see, only half of the counties so far have finalized their regulations. So half of us are still waiting for that June 30th deadline. So there may be more counties on board. But I think it is Tri-County that's probably been doing it the longest, uh, maybe Al Paso County. So a lot, larger, uh, larger counties. And usually with that, they probably have paid a lot of money for a database. We're not gonna be able to do that right off the bat. Um, and again, I'm gonna come back to you or as our Board of Health, um, before the end of the year because our regulations are, for the Title of Transfer are going to become effective January 1 of 2019. So before the end of the year, I'm gonna come back to you and ask if you would feel comfortable charging a permit fee. Like, uh, you know, it's gonna cost you $10 to do this Title of Transfer because it's going to involve work in our office to, to keep track of all this. But like I said, I don't really, I don't know how it's gonna play out. I was, I, I have to make sure that we have our certification first before I can really worry about the next step because without our NAWT certified people, the program's not gonna work.
And this is only for these specialty systems, not the regular current?
Okay, okay, so again, um, do you, I don't know if you remember the criteria that I had set, or we had set, for our Title of Transfer. So it's residential or commercial structures located on properties since 1974 that do not currently have an onsite wastewater system permit. Because again, that's when we started permitting, was 1974. Properties, um, property has a permit issued 20 years or older. So again, we just wanna make sure that the system is operating to its capacity. Um, property has a higher level treatment system. So again, going with those higher, um, treatment level two, treatment level three, um, they treat more of the nitrogen and phosphorus in those systems. Um, more bells and whistles, basically. Um, property's onsite wastewater treatment had a previous failure. And the property has a valid permit, but the property has no structure. Again, we had kinda determined that because, um, a lot of things that happen if there's no structure on the property, you know, has it been driven over? Um, since there's no house there, is there erosion going across the system? I mean, we, we just, again, wanna make sure that the risers are brought to the surface. We know where the leach field is. Um, so those, those five items are what criteria we have set that will require a Title of Transfer Inspection Program, or Title of Transfer Inspection.
So it's basically all septic systems that are 20 years old?
Mm-hmm, right. And keep in mind, we started doing engineered systems in 2004. So we're, you know, some of those still aren't in that requirement.
No, they're not 20 years old yet.
So the only, the thing that sparks this, this 43 is if the property is sold?
So Regulation 43 is what the state has adopted. What I'm reading to you is what we have incorp, um, put into place for Montezuma County as well. Again, the Title of Transfer has been in the state regulations since the last regulation change, but we did not opt in on that program. But if we do.
So it's been there, you just have not.
Correct.
Opted into doing it.
Correct, and same thing with the Oversight Program. It was there on the last revision.
So the state lets you opt in and opt out, I mean, these are optional?
Absolutely. Again, you know, I could've just said, um, no, we're just gonna continue as is. Um, it's a huge undertaking for our county and our office. I mean, we're, you know, a pretty small department.
Yeah.
But, um, I started my fourteenth year and I just feel like it is very, very important that we, um, hold some accountability for our people.
But if this Title of Transfers, but, so, say somebody's been living there for 30 years. There is no current inspection fee. I mean, there's not gonna be, somebody knocking on the door saying, okay, we gotta.
Absolutely not.
It's when there's a Title.
When they're wanting to sell the property. Yep, yeah, I don't have time for that.
And you know, you know, but, and the, my experience with that was, even selling my folks' place, the purchasing people that do the inspections on the home and the property and all of that, that's one of the first things they ask for is for the septic to be located, to be pumped out and cleaned and make sure that it's serviceable so that.
Right.
You've got people out there doing.
Right.
Basically what you're requiring right here.
Right, right.
As, as representing the purchasers of properties of that septic system, so.
Well, and the kicker sometimes with that is in, previously, let's say we did have a lending institution that was wanting this inspection. Very seldom did I have bankers calling me, asking me if there was a current permit on the system. So again, for somebody to look out on the property or even the homeowner to say, okay, this is what we think we have. This is our sketch of what we have. But nobody's really evaluating the tank. They're not evaluating whether there's been something surfacing. Um, they're not really taking into consideration that all of a sudden this property's using 30,000 gallons of water. Where's it all going? You know, so, um, again, it's just another way to make sure that everything is operating properly. We, you know, we don't want any contamination. We want people who are buying a home in Montezuma County to have what, what they think they're buying, you know? A better recollection of what they're buying.
Do you wanna do public comment?
Am I? Passionate, I told you that before.
Well, open this up for public comment. If anybody wants to comment on this, you can come up, state your name and address, podium. I'd like to know what you have to say.
It's complicated.
Often, often that's handy.
So that would become, the Title of Transfer becomes effective on sales January 1, 2019?
Correct. So everything else takes place, becomes effective. So from today, I have five days to submit it to the state. And even if we had changes or comments, you know, anything like that, they don't have to go back to the state for another review. It's basically, once we've made the changes, that's what we're proposing back to the state. And our effective date for our regulation would be May 17th of this year. But the Title of Transfer and Oversight would not become effective until January 19.
We'll load the public comment session.
I got two questions.
Okay.
If, is anything that we do there, if we find out that we did something wrong, do we have the authority to do that?
We do, we need a public hearing. Uh, so they probably take them out.
Yeah, we just have to do another public notice, offer 20 days notice, right? 20 days, I think it's 20 days.
I don't know.
And then, um, I, I mean, we would probably have to submit them back to the state. But anything's doable, I mean.
And I kinda have the same concern, just to, maybe in a year or so, you let us know, report back to us what you think.
I may be retired by then, I don't know.
Maybe.
Come past this and then retire, yeah, I've seen that before.
Working and how burdensome it is on people. Have we created too much of a burden on, like, people? And it'd be nice to hear what you think about it.
Okay.
Your second question is, you suggest there would probably be a fee in the future and you threw out $10, would you stand by that number?
I don't know. We're really going to have to figure out how much time it would actually take.
Yeah, I think we need to figure out the time.
So we could honestly say, okay, we have a three-month leeway, you know? And that way, we could collect enough data in that three months to actually know what it would cost. And then I could come back to you and say, okay, this is the dollar amount that it's, it's costing for Montezuma County to offer this program.
And that would be starting January next year, correct?
Kate, I know you did a lot of research on calling the counties that do offer it. Can you kinda tell them what the permit fees are from low end to high end? Do you remember that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, uh, the lowest end was $10 and then the highest I encountered was no more than 75. So it seems like majority of counties that are doing the transfer are sitting right around the 40, 50 mark.
See, that's what I said about you being a salesman, he used the lower number.
With always the ability to move.
Well, absolutely, yeah, absolutely. Um, and I want it to be a benefit. I don't want, I don't, I know what our, our county median income is. And I, you know, I, I deal with people every day. And I told you, I'm the one that gets to tell people stuff they do not want to hear. Um, but we also can't do it for free.
And, and we're, we're public health. I think we're very conscious of trying to keep our costs at a minimum in everything we do. So it would be the same with this. But we do have to cover our costs to do, to actually institute the program, so. But we'll keep it as low as we can go, for sure.
Any questions?
So what if, what if somebody's just giving property away or, you know, selling it for a dollar or something like that? And it's not a very valuable piece of property, you still charge them $10 bucks or whatever?
Well, if it's vacant property, we don't care.
Right, but it's got a wastewater.
Right, if it has a system on it, um, then it may be a very simple inspection program. But I, I mean, as, if it meets the criteria that we have set, we have, you know, we have to do that.
Quick claims, you're gonna start costing people money there.
Um.
Like quick claim, like property to Commissioner Soukla.
Right.
He's gonna, he's gonna have to pay.
Right.
Or I will.
Right. Yeah, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that.
I mean, I don't know if we should have a provision that it's waivable, you know, or we do wanna waive it. Usually people that are dealing with property have to pay the $10 bucks.
Right, and maybe that's something we would have to evaluate.
Where they don't.
Right, or maybe that's something we evaluate in a year.
I don't think that can be part of our, I mean, we do sliding fee scales for other programs. I mean, maybe they're need, maybe we need to look at that, you know? I mean, depending on what the circumstances is, if it's, if it's a quick claim. I don't know if we're really complicating things here.
Right.
But maybe that's something that we should look at.
Because a quick claim still requires a reporting, right? Still recording.
And if it's got a, if it's got a system on it, it's not completely invaluable.
What's involved in the inspection?
Oh, gosh, they're evaluating what they see. They are not making assumptions and they are not making recommendations. So they are looking at how many bedrooms is in the home. They're going to see if there are cleanouts from the house to the tank. They're going to see if the tank is watertight, what kind of tank it is, whether it's metal, plastic, fiberglass, cinder block. They're going to evaluate if there's surfacing. They're going to make observation if there are inspection ports. Again, they're just going from beginning to end and making those observations. So as an example, um, we have a two-bedroom house. The permit states it's a one-bedroom. Uh, they have determined that the tank is metal and that there is corrosion or that there is seepage at the tank. I mean, they're, they're just making observations. So then that would come back to me and it would be up to me to say, we need to have a new tank installed because this one is no longer watertight. It would basically have to meet what the requirements are of a septic system. But again, the person doing the inspection, they're just making observations, what they see. They're not gonna, you know, dig up the entire field or anything like that. Um, and of course, the newer systems, you know, in 20 years from now, they're gonna know where all those things are located. This inspection program is really just to locate what, what people don't know where anything is located.
Does this transfer title include divorces? Where, where a husband and wife own a property together and they get a divorce and then, you know, one spouse quit claims, title transfers to the other spouse?
Okay, so we, right, so we, what we could look at with that is, um, if the occupancy changes, um, like, I mean, it's still basically the same person living in the home.
Yeah, I feel like we should waive that.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I don't, yeah. But, you know, they're, they've decided to sell the home because they are getting divorced.
Or transfer from one, from two spouses just to one spouse.
But again, it's the same person owning it.
So that's not gonna count as transfer.
No, it wouldn't.
Okay. It's the same, same people, whether it's one of the owners or both of the owners. It's still the same people, so, I don't think that was a lot. I don't think you should count it as transfer. I just didn't want us arbitrarily do that.
Yeah, right, yeah.
No, that wouldn't.
So, you know, and maybe that's something that we will have to do on a fee schedule. I mean, our, on our, already our fee schedule is just make, you know, making that determination of what is what. And maybe it would be as simple as changing our local regulations. Putting in definitions or putting in what? I mean, I don't know, I don't know about that.
Melissa, the reason you're asking us to adopt this, do you feel there are a lot of the systems out there that are in failure status, that are under, underperforming? That this, this is a major thing that needs to be looked at? That there are a lot of septic systems out there that are not.
Not functioning adequately.
Not performing the way they're supposed to?
Well, that's really hard because a lot of the systems that we've replaced this last year were failing systems. And they were, I don't know, between 25 and 30 years old. Um. I don't, I think, I think that's a really hard question. Um, I just really feel like the age of those systems, people don't know.
Cause those 25 and 30 years old have all been permitted, so they've had to go through the permitting process to be suitable.
Yeah, and they've had to have a new engineering system.
Suitable systems and everything, and they're the ones that you see are.
But I also know that there's a lot of systems that are probably failing out there that people don't necessarily know they're failing. Um, you know, maybe they only see a little bit of water standing in the fall or, um, it's only when they have company or, you know, something like that. I don't know. I just really, um, I just know that when we get phone calls, it's from somebody who has bought the property and has no clue about it. Can you help us? Do you know where it's located?
Yeah. That Title of Transfer, probably a real good time to make all that stuff come to, come to pass.
I think it's a starting point.
And I think, John, you've come up with a couple of good examples of things that we need to consider, and I don't know if you.
Yeah, legally.
Or, yeah, I mean, I, I think maybe getting some more input from you. This is my opinion, but I'm thinking maybe if you can, you know, throw us a couple of examples of what we really need to be thinking about as we're setting this, you know, kind of financial guidance, you know, as how.
guidance, you know, as how we, how we want to charge and the situations we need to consider, you know, in this process, so.
Include some sort of common sense, ability to waive.
Well, yeah, and again, it, it would, I don't think we're not going to have phone calls about that. I mean, I know there are going to be tons of realtors, bankers, you know, just, I mean, I sold my property by myself, I went through a title company, I didn't have to have a realtor involved, so...
But there's a lot of transfers of properties from divorces, lots of people get divorced.
Absolutely.
And, I mean, it's probably not something we should be charging them to.
Right. No, you're right.
Right.
Right. Um, yeah, something to look at, for sure.
So if, if we approve of this, um, those details could still be worked out later and they don't need to be worked out before the approval?
I don't know how they're written right now, as far as the, we don't even have a fee right now, do we?
No, because again, it won't even become effective till January, so we've got some time to work on it.
So, yeah.
And you will, as our, as our officer for the county, always be able to make certain conditions and alterations as you see them, as you see them needed.
Yes and no, I would still come before the Board of Health.
Yeah, but you would still, still be able to do that.
But again, if it's something as simple as, you know, we're getting divorced, but he's staying in the house, you know, that nobody's leaving, um, I mean, it's not...
Stuff like that you can deal with directly.
I think so, yeah, I would think so, I don't know, that's, that's a good question for John.
It's, it's like new, new ownership is what trig, what triggers this process, new ownership of the property.
Well, you have title transfer, but you have title transfer when you, when you do what John said.
But they're not new owners if they're divorcing and the one is staying, so somehow we need to define that in a, in a legal sense.
Right, yeah, we got to muddy it up.
Yeah, get it, get it more complicated. Get it more, get it more complicated, yeah. That's just what we need to do.
We believe in rainbows and unicorns still.
Yeah. We've got a place in New York.
Why do you, why do you think that the other counties have, uh, have not jumped on board when they've only got two of us left?
Oh, with adopting the Regulation forty-three?
Yeah.
Um, they're not as on, on their game with me, I guess, no.
It's probably, it's probably capacity, they just don't have the capacity to do it. And, I mean, we have very low capacity, but we have superheroes here, so Melissa's really good and on top of things.
I, I think a lot of other counties too, um, are more stringent in some of their guidelines, and so I think with that, they have to almost rewrite sometimes. You know, they don't have to adopt Regulation forty-three as it is, they can make their own, you know, complete new regulations.
Right, do their own.
Um, right now, with the, with our land use code and our buildings and all that kind of stuff, septic is the only trigger to, um, expansion, you know, more growth and things like that, that's the only tie that we have to...
Gives us any indication that it's...
Of what kind of residential or commercial growth they have.
Right.
We all still need to go potty.
So, yeah, I, I mean, I can't speak for other counties, um, it's, it's a pretty big undertaking for a lot of the larger counties. Um, you know, smaller counties, I don't think, I think it's a matter of dragging your feet, um, and it's here before you know it, too, so...
Do you feel it's very important, though?
I have to agree. Yeah, we have to have direction, or I have to have direction, let's put it that way. If I want to enforce something, it's nice to have a document that backs that.
What's your pleasure?
One thing you said, you said the other counties, um, they just made their own regulations.
Well, as an example, um, and again, I don't know currently what other counties are doing, um, as an example, I know Dolores County, the last go-around just adopted Regulation forty-three. LaPlata County, they adopted their whole, their own set of regulations, they did not use Regulation forty-three. They still have to be as strict as the state, but they can be more strict. So in, in some regards, the only thing that we are more stringent on our guideline is the fact we have all engineered systems, and that is in our...
And we've already, and we already have that.
Yeah, we've had that since two thousand and four, so, um...
Well, I, I'm, based on the, um...
Recommendation?
Recommendation from Melissa Matthews that we adopt, uh, the on-site wastewater treatment system regulations with the Montezuma County Public Health Department.
Second, do we call that a city, call it Regulation forty-three?
Correct.
Okay.
And you could do it with our, um, local, local regulations submitted also.
It's been moved, the second to approve the adoption of the, uh, onsite wastewater treatment system regulations, uh, which includes Regulation forty-three for the Montezuma County Public Health Department. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Got to keep on my toes with you.
Mm-hmm.
At least for a little while.
Okay. Okay, we're closing.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
See you this afternoon.
I'll let you know when they're adopted.
Yes.
When they're adopted.
When it's official.